Meeting is called to order. Can I have the roll, please?
Danielle Bailey.
Here.
Greg Strick.
Here.
Andre Spinelli.
Here.
Seth Anderson.
Here.
Ryan Looney. Ryan Looney.
Here.
Jared Gardner.
Here.
Erin O'Quinn.
Here.
Radhika Krishna.
Here.
Jim Winchester.
Here.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Commissioners, please type in. Moved by Commissioner Krishna, seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Any opposed? Seeing no opposition, the minutes are approved. Moving on to disclosures. Commissioner Spinelli.
Nothing.
Commissioner Strick.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Looney.
Yes, I have two things to disclose. The first item is actually just an informational item, uh, C3. Uh, my company has been involved with that project. But the other item is, uh, item C3, um, case 2020, zero, zero, four, three.
Commissioner Looney, you're kind of, um, muffled a little bit. Could you double check to make sure you don't have any other electronics on or that it's not reverberating back and forth and let us know your disclosures again?
Um, let's see, is this anything clear? How's that sound?
Good.
Okay, so essentially the two items, uh, one is item C3, which is an informational item. Uh, my company has been involved with that. But the, uh, the other item is item G3, which is case 2020, zero, zero, four, three. And our company has been directly involved with that, too. And so I'll probably not participate in G3.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Gardner.
No disclosures.
Commissioner Anderson.
I have no disclosures. But I do need to, you know, uh, my childcare is leaving at eight o'clock, so I need to leave a little bit before then.
All right, thank you. Uh, just notify us in the queue when you're leaving so we can note it for the record. Commissioner O'Quinn. Commissioner O'Quinn.
Uh, no disclosures.
Commissioner Krishna.
Yes, I have multiple disclosures if you'll bear with me. Um, first, on cases, uh, S-12537 and 2020-0029, which are the two solid waste services items, I, uh, will be recused from this due to service on the Solid Waste and Recycling Advisory Commission. And then I have an additional disclosure for case, uh, 2020-0043. Um, that's public sharing, uh, three, the Spinnard corridor plan. Um, all right, my disclosure is that I attended the March Spinnard Community Council meeting where that, um, item came up. And then additionally, uh, two weeks ago, the community council had emailed me asking how to submit comments to this, uh, to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I had referred them to staff. But, uh, I do, uh, plan to participate in that item.
All right, that seems appropriate. You will be, uh, recused from, uh, G1, G2, and you will participate in G3. Commissioner Winchester.
Nothing to disclose.
And I have no disclosures either. Uh, moving on to, uh, item C2. Can we hear from staff?
Thank you. This is regarding, this is an informational item regarding the Seward Highway, O'Malley Road, Diamond Boulevard project. And the Planning and Zoning Commission had approved the design study report for this project in May 2018. And the informational item is pertaining to, uh, items post, uh, Urban Design Commission approval. So the Plans in Hand approval, uh, was, uh, almost a year ago, and that was, um, they are changing several items in the scope. One, the most notable being, uh, on figure, figure one, on page three of the informational item, you'll see the proposed diverging diamond interchange at Diamond Boulevard, uh, and the Seward Highway. They are, they have elected to keep the interchange mostly as is, as represented in figure two, uh, which is today's intersection plus several bicycle pedestrian safety improvements. And the project's schedule is also changing from construction in late 2021 to anticipating a start in late 20, or in 2022, depending upon availability of funding. And none of these changes, uh, affect or, you know, have any impact on the conditions of approval that the Planning and Zoning Commission put on the DSR back in 2018. But this is just, uh, the project team giving you a heads up that the project has kind of changed course a little bit, although most of it is still as, as was seen in Plans in Hand. So if you have any questions, let me know. And also, I believe the project team is on, on the line as well.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Commissioner Strick.
Yes, thank you, Chief. I note on figure two of the 214-2020, the way that the O'Malley split O'Malley into stipulation for project to consider is considering minor safety improvements focused on bicycle pedestrian safety. Can you, can you explain some of the, um, changes on the bicycle pedestrian safety changes are?
So I believe that the changes are primarily adding those refuge islands that you see called out in the, uh, in figure three adjacent to figure two. And, uh, we'll let the project team clarify if I've missed something or if there is anything in addition to those refuge islands. Is the project team on? So to the best of my knowledge, uh, without the project team's input, it is those refuge islands, uh, that, that are the primary accommodations increasing safety for pedestrians.
Okay, okay, I appreciate that. Um, I know that this was a hot topic. We first reviewed the original plans and what precautions we would be taking for pedestrians. As we do note that this is a travel pedestrian bicycle pathway. Right, let me speak. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? I have one question for staff. Um, moving forward today, are we looking for an approval of the, uh, item C2?
Uh, there's no voter approval tonight, um, either, either C2 or C3. They're informational items for the Planning and Zoning Commission, just so that, you know, they're aware of what, what the project is undertaking and what's changed.
All right, so then if there are no further questions, we can move on to item C3?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I think we're ready to move on to C3 when you are.
Okay, so item C3 is, uh, improvements to Lowest Drive and West 32nd Avenue in Spinnard, primarily relating to non-motorized improvements, potentially a pathway or something similar. It's really looking at a complete streets methodology to balance the road for all users. And the improvements may include roadway reconstruction and/or resurfacing, new curbs or storm drain, sidewalks, pathways, street lighting, signage and landscaping, utility relocation, uh, as required due to corridor improvements, and potentially other, other improvements as well. So as the commission is aware, this is a concept report, or a contact sensitive solutions concept report, which is the first stage in the context, uh, the context sensitive solutions process. And it's an informational item just to make the commission aware of the project and to, uh, let them know the, uh, public involvement and the different activities that the project team has been undertaking to date. The next step will be the design study report. And the, at the design study report phase, there will be more detailed plans and alternatives, uh, for the commission to consider. Uh, but this is a informational report only. And if you have any questions on this, um, I can field those questions or the project team, who I believe is on the line.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff or for the project team? Have a question from Commissioner Gardner.
Yeah, thank you. My only question was, I recall, I don't remember how long ago this was, but within the past year, we reviewed a, um, a plan to develop a, like a pedestrian corridor from Old Seward. I don't remember the exact route it took. I think it kind of followed 33rd and then wrapped around by Walmart and 32nd. Um, went to, I think at least Spinnard, I don't know if it went past Spinnard or not, I can't recall. And I was just wondering if there, if that project lined up with this project in any way, and if there was any need or value in looking at the status of that, um, and how it relates to this.
So that's a good question. Um, yes, that was 32nd, 33rd Avenue's upgrades project, which is, uh, phases one through four, now entering the Urban Design Commission Plans in Hand, uh, review process at 65%. Um, the, so the, that project actually, uh, the closest it comes to this corridor is just to the east of Spinnard Road on West 31st, because on that side, this side of Arctic, um, or on the west side of Arctic, it actually comes from, uh, up to, only up to Spinnard Road. And it's on West 34th, West 31st in that portion. So it, it is close to this project, but is not, I don't believe it's related, but I'll let the project team, uh, chime in if there are any cross, you know, is there any consideration between the two projects?
Um, hello, this is Matt Edge. Um, I'm the project manager for both the West 32nd Avenue, East 33rd Avenue upgrades project and the Lowest Drive and West 32nd Avenue upgrades project. Um, the two projects are completely independent, uh, they don't go across Minnesota Drives to provide connectivity. So there's no direct, uh, correlation between the two projects. There is another project that, uh, is in the works for improvements on Spinnard Road, uh, that will go from Benson Boulevard to, um, Minnesota. Um, and that would, they would not directly connect, but it would extend, uh, improvements to a point where you could get across Minnesota Drive and then on to, uh, West 32nd Avenue and Lowest if you need to. But in short, there's no, no direct correlation between the two projects in question.
Okay, thank, thank you for that, um, clarification. I just, I just, I couldn't remember how far west that prior project went, so it sounds like there's, there's a gap between them yet.
Correct. Thank you.
Seeing no other questions in the queue on this matter, I believe, uh, we can move on to our public hearings. Before we get into those, I'll read the procedure by which the public may speak at the commission. The procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meeting is as follows. After the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission rules of procedure. Petitioners, including all of his or her representatives, will receive 10 minutes. Part of their time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representatives of groups such as community councils, PTAs, et cetera, shall receive five minutes. Individuals will receive three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to the action of the Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except for the commission's recommendations to the assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the clerk's office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution of which, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. Staff, can we hear the report for item G1?
Thank you. Solid Waste Services is requesting to subdivide six lots into one lot and to vacate the 30-foot wide Latu Street right-of-way that extends north from the southern property line of Lot One of the proposed Jack McAllister subdivision to East 56th Avenue. Per AMC 210204OB2, the Planning and Zoning Commission has authority over this preliminary plat and right-of-way vacation because it is associated with a conditional use, the requirement of vacation of a dedicated public area. And that is case 2020-0029, which will be occurring, uh, directly after this case. And Solid Waste Services is requesting this subdivision and right-of-way vacation to facilitate the construction of their proposed central transfer station facility, which will be the subject of the conditional use. For public comments, 521 public hearing notices were mailed on February 25th, 2020, but no comments were received from the public or the community. No reviewing agencies had objections to either the requested subdivision or right-of-way vacation. Relevant comments from each agency are incorporated into the conditions of approval where appropriate. And looking at the standards for the vacation of Latu through the subdivision, per municipal policy, the following standards must be considered in any vacation of public rights of way. Uh, consideration one, Latu, uh, the statement by the applicant alleging the right-of-way is surplus to the current and future needs of the public and the reasons for determining the right-of-way is surplus. So Latu Street is, is a right-of-way that is 30 feet wide through most of the platted area, except for a short section that is 40 to 50 feet wide near East 56th Avenue. Latu Street in the platted area is designated as a local street according to the OSHP Official Streets and Highways Plan, which requires a minimum right-of-way of 50 feet. The applicant could be required to accommodate Latu Street by dedicating an additional 20 to 30 feet to create a right-of-way that is at least 50 feet wide for OS and HP requirements. However, Latu Street right-of-way does not connect north or south of the platted area, uh, and this significantly limits its potential for facilitating the movement of people and traffic beyond the area. Uh, the traffic department and private development do not object to the vacation. And considering the factors above, the right-of-way could be considered surplus to the current and future needs of the public. Uh, item two, the municipality will not entertain any vacation of right-of-way on a street on the official streets and highways plan unless it can be shown without a doubt that the right-of-way is clearly in excess of all future needs for the right-of-way. And similar to, uh, consideration one, the right-of-way is in excess of future needs because Latu Street does not connect north or south. And the, uh, so the applicant has shown that minimal traffic impacts external to the site can be expected from the proposed central transfer station, reducing the need for that, um, connectivity through the platted area. Three, any right-of-way lying on the half-mile grid will not be considered for vacation unless it can be without a doubt shown that the right-of-way is clearly in excess of all future needs for the right-of-way. Uh, this does not apply because the right-of-way is not located on the half-mile grid. Four, similarly, uh, similar question, but concerning the quarter-mile grid and Latu Street, this does not, also does not apply because of Latu Street right-of-way is not located on the quarter-mile grid. Five, in all cases, it must be proven that the remaining property and area can be adequately served and the traffic circulation is enhanced by the vacation of the right-of-way. And in this case, the proposed central transfer station facility will be adequately served by East 56th Avenue and East Dowling Road. And circulation internal to the site will be achieved through onsite private roads and driveways that facilitate the movement of recyclables through, through the area. Vacating Latu's right-of-way will enhance traffic circulation by providing more space for customized access to key points within the facility. And in addition, a hammerhead turnaround will be provided on the portion of Latu that connects to East Dowling Road to ensure that emergency vehicles and others can, can turn around if they enter the right-of-way. Six, the municipality will consider realignment of right-of-way by vacation and rededication where it can clearly be shown that the right-of-way realignment will enhance traffic circulation and will provide for the movement of traffic with generally the same beginning and ending points as the original right-of-way. And this does not apply in this case. The application is not proposing realignment or rededication, it's just proposing, uh, complete vacation. So considering this, uh, the department recommends approval of the vacation of the 30-foot wide Latu Street right-of-way interior to the final boundaries of Lot One, Jack McAllister subdivision, subject to recording a final plat within 24 months, plus any time extensions. And for the plat itself, the department recommends approval of the plat for 24 months, subject to the conditions on page six and seven of the staff report. And, uh, for the commission's benefit, I actually have, uh, a, um, reorganized, slightly reorganized set of conditions of approval. And, um, I think we're going to bring those up on the screen right now so I can read some of them off. And this is just so you can see them, uh, it's really a technical change. So initially, when the conditions of approval were proposed to the applicant, uh, the concern, there's a concern that they, the, um, requirements for some of the construction of the right-of-way would actually need to be, it was phrased as if they needed to be completed before, the actual construction needed to be completed before, um, the plat was, was, could be recorded. So the way we've changed this, or what we've done to address the situation, is looking at standard or, um, condition approval six, enter into a subdivision agreement with private development for the required improvements to East 56th Avenue and Latu Street. We are putting conditions four, five, and eight underneath six so that the, it is clear that the improvements requested through the plat only need to be part of the subdivision agreement and not actually constructed prior to the, the approval of the preliminary plat. So, um, essentially, it would be number six, condition of approval six would become condition of approval four. And it would read, enter into a subdivision, uh, enter into a subdivision agreement with private development for the required improvements to East 56th Avenue and Latu Street to include, A, replace, uh, replace the existing road curb and gutter on the south side of East 56th Avenue and construct, and construct an attached five-foot sidewalk from Homer Drive to the final western boundary of the Jack McAllister subdivision. B, construct Latu Street between the final southern boundary of the Jack McAllister subdivision and the north end of the existing improvements at East Dowling Road as a paved street with type one curb and gutter on both sides with a turnaround of the north end. The width of the road improvements and turnaround configuration shall be resolved with private development. And C, providing, provide a copy of approved drawings or agreements with the municipality that provide a full paved section with curbs and gutter, as well as appropriate no parking fire lane signage for the, for the remaining portion of Latu Street right-of-way between the final southern boundary of the Jack McAllister subdivision and East Dowling Road. And with that, I'll conclude the report. If there are any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
And I just want to note for the record that Radhika has been recused, so she will not be participating in this matter or the next item on the agenda. It looks like we have, uh, questions in the queue. From Commissioner Strick.
Yes, thank you, Chief. I noticed on the department recommendation number two, we're looking at a new dedication, is this a new dedication or an additional dedication of 30 feet on the right-of-way for East 56th? And if that isn't new, my question is, we're giving up a current right-of-way of 30 feet on Latu, under the guise that it's too small anyway, we'd require 50 feet instead of 30 feet. So my question comes back to number two recommendations, why would the 30-foot right-of-way for East 56th be 50 feet as opposed to 30 feet that's recommended?
So the 30 feet for East 56th Avenue, the dedication is a new dedication, and it's essentially completing the right-of-way that, the subdivision of land here would require. It's not dedicating any new, new street or right-of-way, it's just providing more right-of-way for, uh, the existing East 56th Avenue segment that's within the project area or within the subdivision. Was that the question?
So just saying that this dedication of 30 feet right-of-way for East 56th Avenue is not intended to, it, there's already a street there, so it's an additional 30 feet. So there's already, the street already goes through at that point.
Correct.
Because it does say dedicate 30 feet for East 56th Avenue, which is why I was confused whether or not this was an additional dedication or putting, uh, putting a street through. But I understand it may be 50 feet or 30 feet.
Right, and so, so in cases where the, so the northern, the properties north of here have already dedicated their portion of 60 feet. So the way the plating rules, rules work is that you, uh, subdivision is only required to dedicate half of that spa, half of the, the right-of-way that, uh, of the street that abuts it. So in this case, East 56th, the subdivision is dedicating 30 feet for East 56th where the northern subdivision, the subdivision north of it has already dedicated 30 feet, um, making a total of 60 feet for the right-of-way.
Excellent, okay. It might help if it were more clear, this gets up to the assembly, but it's going to become a topical discretion point. Um, so, thank you, that clarifies it for me, though. Thank you.
No, thank you, good question.
Commissioner Gardner.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of questions, but I, I'm hopeful that, um, some of them will be quick. The first is, is pretty technical, and on the, um, I guess on page two of the staff report, it mentions our authority to, um, to review this and, um, I guess consider this preliminary plat. And the section that it cites there says that we do have the authority, but we need to direct in the conditional use approval that we are acting as a plating authority. And I was just wondering if we need to make some sort of finding to that effect in the other case that you're aware of, or if that doesn't matter?
Yeah, it's not, it's not essential for, for the process, but it wouldn't, it couldn't hurt, um, if, if there's a desire to clarify the commission's role in this case, um, and have a finding in one case or both that, uh, just makes it clear that in the resolution that the commission is acting as a planning authority, that, that couldn't hurt, but it's not required.
Okay, thanks. Um, the other question I had was the, uh, criteria that we're evaluating here, is this criteria not from Title 21 and it's from some other municipal policy? Is that right?
That's correct. This is, this is not from Title 21, and they're actually, uh, municipal policy standards, they're not Title 21 standards. They're guideline standards that we use to, um, assess whether or not a right-of-way vacation is appropriate. But they're, you're correct, they're not Title 21 standards.
Okay, thanks. And then the final question I have is the traffic, uh, report that is identified in the footnote on page five. Was that analysis done, was that based on increased traffic associated or anticipated with the transfer station, or did it specifically consider the effect of removing the right-of-way?
So from my recollection, it looked at the, the actual future conditions, um, I think 20, 20 to 40 years in the fut, uh, after the Solid Waste Transfer Station has been constructed. Um, so I believe that it, I don't believe it factored, it did not assume, it assumed that Latu Street would not be there.
Okay, so it looked at current conditions and then compared it with, um, the proposed transfer sta, transfer station as, as the, as the design is, is currently considered?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I do not see any other questions in the queue. I just want to ask one clarifying question for staff before we move on to the petitioner. For this matter, just to help us through it, are we going to need two motions of approval? One for relating to, uh, A, and the other one relating to B?
Uh, yes, there will be two motions, uh, the, one approving the vacation and one approving the actual preliminary plat itself. Yes.
All right, so that's just a heads up for our commission members when the time for motion comes around. Um, could we hear from the petitioner?
Hi, this is Kriti Chmilowski, with Dow. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Please let us know.
I'm going to share my screen, yeah.
And if you could also let us know how much time you would like to reserve for rebuttal.
Yes, um, so this is, my name is Kriti Chmilowski, C-H-M-I-E-L-O-W-S-K-I. I'm with Dow. Um, I'd like to reserve two minutes for rebuttal. And I'm here tonight representing Solid Waste Services for the new central transfer station. So Lekmye and I are, uh, many of the team members with Solid Waste Services, Tetra Tech, who's the lead consultant on this project, and then also with Dow, who is supporting Tetra Tech in a variety of tasks. So I'm going to give you a little bit of background on why this project is needed before I get into the specifics about the plat. So one of the things that most people don't realize is that this is a critical piece of infrastructure. Eighty percent of Anchorage's trash Eighty percent of Anchorage's trash comes to the central transfer station before going on to the landfill. And why it's important is that it's the first opportunity to look at recycling and reuse and divert materials from the landfill so that it doesn't fill up quickly. So just to kind of put that in perspective, on an average Saturday, the central transfer station sees 800 vehicles on the residential side, and it sees 30 garbage trucks on the commercial side and about 30 transfer trucks that go to the landfill. So that equates to 265,000 pounds of trash a year, and that's enough to fill the BP building every month. So a lot of trash comes here. So you may wonder why it's important that we're looking at building a new transfer facility. And there's just some inherent deficiencies with the current facility. It's over 40 years old, and it was originally designed and constructed to be a shredder plant and then was later converted to a transfer facility. So if you've ever been there, you know the building is essentially open to the elements, and so, you know, trash gets tracked around, it's difficult to control orders. It doesn't have a great queuing space for people who are coming in to either drop off recyclables or to use the tipping floor. If you've been there on a Saturday, you've probably waited a long time because everybody has to go through the trash booth to get out of the facility. And then probably the most important reason is that although they offer recycling and reuse opportunities, they're really out of space to offer anything besides what, besides what they do today. And, and that's so important because it plays into the life of the landfill. So the more we can divert from the landfill, the longer it will last for us. So why do we care if the landfill fills up? Well, we don't really have any other place in Anchorage where we can build a new one. And so that would mean that once it's full, we would be looking at shipping our trash outside, whether it's to the valley or out of, out of state. And that's at a substantially higher cost to the users than what we see today. So if you, if you go to the Solid Waste Services webpage, you'll see this countdown clock for the landfill. And so if you go there and you see this, if we do nothing besides what we're doing today, there's about 43 years left. And that seems like a long time, but I guess how I look at it is, it may not affect me, I may not see it in my lifetime, but I have young children, and so it's the next generations that are going to be impacted. And everything that we can do to further recycle and reuse material will extend the life of the landfill substantially. So just to give you a little idea of where we have come from and where we're going as far as schedule, we started this project with a variance request. The actual site itself is within 500 feet of a residentially zoned property across the highway, and code doesn't allow that for a transfer facility. So we were granted a variance request from UDC last fall for that separation distance. And then we're here tonight to talk about the plating request and the conditional use permit. And that's really to get us started on groundbreaking, which is scheduled for mid-summer this year, and then opening the facility in 2023. And just to give you an idea, because this facility is really for the entire community, we wanted to make sure that we had, we got all the comments and input that we could, whether it was related to the design of the new facility or wanted to hear what people wanted for future recycling and reuse opportunities. So not only did we have the required community meetings, but we also gave monthly updates to talk with Campbell Community Council as well as Abbott Look Community Council. We've continued to do that debate. We were also set to give a presentation to the Federation of Community Council right before COVID hit. So we weren't able to do that in person, but we provided them with a PowerPoint presentation with notes that was distributed to all the community councils so they could be up to date on the project. And then we do have a project webpage that we keep updated with design information, and we'll continue updating that through construction. So this is just the, this is the cover page for the webpage that we've, we've created for this project. So let's talk a little bit about the plat. So as, as was mentioned, right now, the, the site is made up of six parcels, and then the 30-foot right-of-way that's essentially in the center here of the site. And so what we're requesting is to combine this into a single parcel to allow us to maximize the site as far as building placement, entrances and exits. Because one of the main concerns was to be able to separate traffic for the different users. And then I know there were some questions about the Latu right-of-way. So what we're asking is to vacate the onsite portion. The offsite piece would remain, and it would also be upgraded. Right now, this piece is gravel, and there's pavement right at the intersection of Dowling at the apron. This portion of Latu would become part of the fire lane and also a bypass lane for residential traffic that's just coming to drop off reusable materials so that they don't have to go through the tipping floor to drop off those materials. So it'd be upgraded to be paved with curb and gutter all the way out to Dowling. And then, I know there was a question about East 56th. So right now, there's a public use movement that encumbers our half of East 56th, so we would actually be dedicating the 30 feet of right-of-way for a total of 60 feet for East 56th. So this is what the final plat would look like based on our request tonight to combine that into a single parcel and vacate that right-of-way. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I think I may have jumped over Commissioner Looney in the queue. Did you have a question?
This is Commissioner Looney, can you hear this time?
Yes.
Actually, so Commissioner Gardner really had very similar questions to what I had. So that was from, I guess, his question about them, this essentially being a plating-type authority, which we're, we're acting in that mode because of the related conditional use case. But I guess, I thought it was kind of odd that we've never really had a case where we're reviewing the case of, of a right-of-way. But I can see the logic, it's just, it's kind of not normal for us, I guess. But I'll go along with it, if that's the plan.
All right, and Commissioner Gardner, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I don't know if you have available a slide with any drawing of, more broadly, and I guess I'm looking at one from the conditional use application that kind of shows the intended layout and design. But yeah, I was, I was hoping you could describe what the intended traffic flows are for the different types of anticipated uses. It wasn't entirely clear to me.
Sure, sure, I can do that. So, so starting up here at the, well, let me back up. So this is East 56th, north is pointing to the left. So the orientation's slightly different than what you saw on the, on the plating drawing. This is New Seward Highway up on the top side of the page. So starting up at the top, residential traffic would enter into this first driveway off of East 56th. They would either peel off to drop off reusable or recyclable materials, and then they could continue on this bypass lane that would go out to Latu. Or they would continue into the queue that goes into the tipping floor and then back out to East 56th. Commercial trucks come in off of 56th, go through the building, and come back out the same driveway that they entered. And then transfer trailers will enter off of Dowling, come into the tipping floor, and then back out to East 56th. So a full traffic impact analysis was done and approved by DOT and the municipality. And what we found was that although traffic patterns were slightly shifting, we weren't necessarily adding a bunch of traffic, because a lot of the traffic comes into the existing facility off of 56th and exits back out that way. So we were shifting traffic patterns slightly, but not an overall change that prompts a bunch of upgrades or mitigation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Before we get to Commissioner Anderson, Mr. Hodges, did you have an item of clarification or something you wanted to bring up?
Yes, just really briefly. So onsite circulation and some of the other considerations will, will also be a major, major topic of discussion in the conditional use that's coming up next. So if there are questions about that, they can, they could be held to, to that case. That will be discussed further. This, this case, the plat and the vacation right-of-way is primarily for the, you know, for the vacation of Latu, although the circulation internal to the site is, you know, to some extent important for the, you know, for the vacation of Latu in the sense that it's facilitating internal traffic, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson?
Thanks. I think most of my questions are probably more appropriate for the conditional use. But one question, in the side information packet, there's some discussion on what's still in wetland areas and then a dedicated wetland do not disturb area. Now, when the staff is typically shown on the pot somewhere, or if it's not, we need add a condition of approval to make it clear that that needs to be updated with the Corps of Engineers?
So if you look at the, in the northwest corner of the site is a conservation easement that exists today, and we will be maintaining that easement, which is where the wetlands are located.
Any other questions for the petitioner? All right, thank you. And do we have any members of the public wishing to testify on this matter? All right, going back to the petitioner, I believe you have two minutes and 54 seconds remaining for rebuttal.
I have no further comments to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Since there's no further public testimony and the petitioner has concluded their case, what is the will of the body? Just like to remind commissioners that we will have to make two motions on this item. One addressing item A on page six, and one addressing item B as amended by staff on page six and seven. Would any commission member like to make a motion regarding item A? Commissioner Gardner?
Yes, sorry, I'm, I'm happy to make a motion, but I realize I, I missed the distinction about the two separate motions we need to make. I think maybe first we move on item A, and then we move on item B.
I believe that's correct, but I'm going to get clarification from staff.
Yes, that is correct. And also, just a brief reminder to, to please include, if, if the commission agrees with the revised conditions of approval, to mention those in, in the resolution as well. Thank you.
Okay. In that case, I guess I, in, I'll move in case number, that's 12537, the vacation of the 30-foot Latu Street right-of-way to, of course. And I guess I'll add, as described in the recommendation A on page six of the staff report.
Just as a clarification, Commissioner Gardner, I may have missed some of your motion. Was that subject to recording a final plat within 24 months plus any time extensions?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Motion by Commissioner Gardner, it looks like we have a second by Commissioner Looney. Commissioner Gardner, would you like to take first crack at speaking to your motion?
Sure, so I guess first, I'll just, I'll just note that as a commission, we're exercising our authority under Title, Section 2102040B2, although I realize that might not be necessary for A. But in addition to that, I think that the approval criteria under municipal policy are satisfied. It looks like primarily there's a significant need for the proposed project, but the, specifically to the, to the right-of-way, it doesn't extend north or south of the area. There's no anticipated effect on traffic associated with the vacation of the right-of-way. And I will also note that we didn't receive any comments from the community council or the public in advance of the public hearing today, and we didn't receive any comments from today at the hearing itself.
Would anybody else like to speak to this motion? Commissioner Strike?
Yes, thank you, to the Chair. I would ask, we'd like to add one additional finding as well, that in agency comments, that there were no reviewing agencies had objections to our requested subdivision or right-of-way vacation. I think that is important. And whether or not it's appropriate for A and B, I would also note that the conservation easement is still maintained. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that although we haven't seen that there was a traffic impact analysis done, and per advice of staff and the petitioner, there was sufficient capacity without this right-of-way to serve future needs.
Thank you. Seeing no one else in the queue, call for a vote. Mr. Spinelli?
Yes.
Chair Bailey? Yes. Mr. Strike?
Yes.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. O'Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Winchester?
Yes.
That motion passes, their approval of the vacation of the 30-foot wide Latu Street, subject to the recording of a final plat within 24 months, has been approved. Would anyone else like to make a motion regarding item B as amended by staff? That would be a motion for approval of the plat for 24 months subject to the conditions amended by staff, if anyone would like to make a motion. Commissioner Gardner?
Yes, thank you. I'll move in case S12537, I guess for a proposed plat, to approve the plat for 24 months, subject to the conditions on page six and seven of the staff report, as I guess recently do modified and presented by the staff at the, at the hearing today.
Thank you. Seconded by Commissioner Gardner, by Commissioner Strike. Would you like to speak to your motion?
Um, let's see.
Or would any other commissioner like to speak to this motion?
Well, this is, this is Jared. I guess I'll note for this one as well, that I think this is where it's appropriate, just to make on the record that we are deciding to exercise our authority over this preliminary plat, because it's associated with a conditional use under 2102040B2.
Thank you.
And I guess more generally, I'll just state again that the proposed expansion of the transfer station that this plat will support will provide a significant and much-needed role for the community.
Thank you. Commissioner Strike?
Yes, thank you to the Chair. First off, I'd like to thank the staff. This was a pretty well-laid-out proposal before the plea of the commission, and thinking for that. I would like to reiterate the previous findings that were used on section A. Perpetually to note that the conservation easement is still maintained, that there were no public comments that were received pursuant to the finding between the public hearing basis that we may adopt. And again, no, we received, when we spoke to the right-of-way vacation, we also had the opportunity to speak to the easement as well. So there were no comments that came back in that regard. And I would like to note that there was no public testimony heard this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other members of the commission in the queue, call for a vote. Seeing no other members of the commission in the queue, call for a vote. Mr. Spinelli?
Yes.
Chair Bailey? Yes. Mr. Strike?
Yes.
Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. O'Quinn?
Yes.
And Mr. Winchester?
Yes.
Thank you. And that motion passes. Moving on to case 2020-0029, can we, I would just like to note that Commissioner Krishna is still recused in this matter, and staff, can we have the report?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. This is a request for a conditional use permit to allow for the development of the new central transfer station, a solid waste recycling transfer facility for municipal solid waste services. The petition site is located directly south of the existing central transfer station, which is between 56th Avenue and Delling Road. This new facility will expand, enhance, and replace the majority of refuse handling and disposal functions of the current central transfer station. The current transfer station does not have the capacity nor the capabilities to efficiently process the variety of materials that are present within today's waste stream. The additional capacity and capabilities of this new facility will allow for increased waste diversion from the Anchorage landfill. This new facility will extend the usable life of the Anchorage landfill because it will allow for additional methods of waste processing, which will assist in diverting waste away from the Anchorage landfill. Construction of this new facility is anticipated to begin this summer, with full completion by fall of 2023. The planning department has evaluated the application and presents the following findings. For a conditional use approval criteria, one, we find the criteria is met. The petition site is classified as light industrial commercial per the Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan, Land Use Plan map. The proposed use is consistent with this classification. The property will continue to be used as an industrial use for the foreseeable future. In addition, the following goals of the Anchorage 2040 Land Use Plan apply to this case. That'd be goal two, infill and redevelopment; goal five, infrastructure land use; goal seven, compatible land use; goal nine, industrial land. It's also important to note that the submitted site plan is compliant with all dimensional standards of Title 21. Adequate snow storage area is not clarified on the submitted site plan. In accordance with the standards of Anchorage Municipal Code, Title 21, Chapter 7, Subsection 040F, snow storage and disposal, an area equal to 5% of the paved surface area shall be dedicated to snow storage, or the petitioner shall be required to enter into a snow management agreement. And this is added as a condition of approval for the conditional use permit. It's also important to note that the submitted site plan is compliant with landscaping and parking standards, as well as pedestrian access. For conditional use approval criteria two, the criteria is met. The petition zone, petition site is zoned I-1, light industrial, which permits solid waste and/or recycling transfer facilities, subject to the approval of a conditional use permit. This new facility will greatly enhance the capabilities and operations of solid waste services and is consistent with the purpose and intent of the underlying zoning district. Conditional use approval criteria three, the criteria is met, and with the use-specific standards, we do find full compliance with those. And I will also note, it was mentioned in the previous case, but solid waste services did receive a variance to encroach within that 500-foot buffer from a residential zoning district, and that was granted by the Urban Design Commission through Resolution 2019-13. For approval criteria four, we believe the criteria is met. The petition site is approximately 27.65 acres in size, and the shape of the lot is roughly rectangular. This lot orientation and size allows for adequate space for the placement of structures, vehicular circulation facilities, stormwater retention, and required landscaping and screening that can accommodate the needs and requirements of this proposed use. For criteria five, we believe the criteria is met. Surrounding area is primarily developed with other industrial uses of comparable scale. This area of town has historically housed various industrial uses and will continue to do so into the foreseeable future. Because of this, it is unlikely that the development of this new facility will alter or adversely impact the character or use of the surrounding area. All adjacent property, with the exception of an R3 district to the east, is zoned I-1, which permits a variety of industrial and commercial uses. The proposed facility will be located due south of the existing facility, which has served as a central transfer station since the 1970s. Residents of Anchorage have come to know this location well, and the orderly redevelopment of the new transfer facility south of the existing one is unlikely to cause any adverse impacts to adjacent property. The majority of material processing will take place within a new fully enclosed facility, which will help mitigate off-site odor and noise migration. Hours of operation will be within a normal weekday and weekend schedule. For criteria six, we believe the criteria is met. The scale of this use is compatible with the allowed uses in the surrounding neighborhood and the pattern at which the neighborhood was developed. There is an R3 mixed residential neighborhood located each of the petition site. This R3 district is separated from the petition site by the sewered highway. This separation, combined with a difference in grade and the retention of mature landscaping along the eastern lot boundary, will adequately screen and buffer this facility from the neighboring residential district. The surrounding mixed residential neighborhood has been developed with housing styles ranging from single-family homes to large multifamily dwellings. The proposed site improvements are not anticipated to create any adverse impacts to the area. The requested expansion and improvements will not significantly alter the scale of the building nor will it negatively alter their operations. Hours of operations will not change, and the number of onsite employees is unlikely to increase significantly. Any issues with dust, noise, or light pollution will be mitigated through the implementation of best management practices during construction. Upon the completion of construction, there'll be no adverse impacts from dust, noise, or light pollution. For criteria seven, the criteria is met. The new central transfer station is designed and constructed in a manner that will greatly reduce its impact on surrounding properties as compared to the existing transfer station. The vast majority of site operations at the new facility will be enclosed. This will significantly reduce the amount of trash that is carried off-site from wind or water, and it will make it easier to maintain a clean and aesthetically pleasing site operation. Because the amount of vehicle queuing being accommodated on-site will reduce both the need and amount of vehicle queuing taking place within the right-of-way of East 56th Avenue. Stormwater facilities will be installed on-site to retain and treat stormwater to prevent any contamination of waterways and groundwater from originating from this site. Wetlands on-site will not be developed until they are properly permitted by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers and the Municipality of Anchorage. These permits were applied for in February of 2020 and are anticipated to be issued in June. For approval criteria eight, the criteria is met. The petition site has direct access to both East 56th Avenue and Latu Street. According to the information provided by the applicant, approximately 800 vehicles for residential drop-off pass through the existing facility on a typical Saturday. The existing central transfer station sees frequent vehicular backups and long wait times of up to three hours at peak hours due to the lack of available onsite queuing space, which is approximately 65 vehicle spaces, and payment processing booths. These backups often spill over into the public right-of-way. Also, there's no separate drive aisle for customers wishing to dispose of household hazardous waste and those dropping off large items to the tipping floor. The new facility will provide separated drive aisles for refuse drop-off and household hazardous material drop-off. This separation will accommodate up to 150 vehicle queuing spaces. The additional queuing spaces at the new facility will prevent spill-over into the public right-of-way. And for criteria nine, we believe the criteria is met. Site is located within Anchorage Roads and Drainage Service Area, the Building Service Area, and the Police and Fire Service Area, and public water and sewer service is available to the petition site. And taking these findings into account, the planning department recommends approval of the conditional use permit, subject to the conditions as stated on pages 10 and 11 of the staff report. Also want to make the applicant and the commission aware of the advisory comments on page 11 from both the Anchorage Health Department and municipal addressing. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Strike?
Yes, thank you, through the chair. On number seven, the last paragraph, wetlands on-site will not be developed until they're properly permitted. Does that conflict with the conservation easement, or this in the same area that the conservation easement was issued?
Through the chair, Commissioner Strike. The petitioner, I'm sure can probably dive into this in a little more detail than I could, but there are wetlands of various grades scattered throughout the petition site, and they're of a lower quality or a lower grade, so they don't necessarily require you to go through the Army Corps of Engineers to get permitted to be developed. But that would explain that statement in the staff report.
I can relate to the petition, and I'd like to address that. And concerning this, we don't know because conservation easement now is seeking not to be maintained, and this is going to conflict with that. So I'll move to the petitioners. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Seeing no other questions from staff, can we hear from the petitioner?
Hi, this is Laquita Chmilowsky, C-H-M-I-E-L-O-W-S-K-I, with Dow. And I'm just going to jump into going through the site plan information, because we've already talked about the need. I would like to reserve two minutes for rebuttal, and I have no objections to the conditions that staff has presented. So I know one of the questions was about the wetlands, and so before I talk about how the facility functions, there are, there is the conservation easement here that's outlined by the dash line up in the northwest corner of the site. That is being maintained. We are not changing anything within those wetlands or disturbing that area at all as part of this project. There are additional, what they call type C wetlands, which are your kind of lowest grade of wetlands on the eastern portion of the site, kind of near the highway. We are in the process of going through the Army Corps of Engineers to permit throwing those wetlands as part of this project, and we are well within that process and getting close to getting a permit in hand. So with that, I'll talk a little bit about the, we talked about the access in and out of the site, but specific to the residential traffic, because I know we had staff touched on the queuing. So we have two lanes that come in to the site, and then the cash booth is here near the entrance. So not only does that provide additional queuing, that doesn't exist at the site, at the existing facility today, but there's additional queuing behind it, and then the ability for folks who just want to drop off recycling or reuse material to get out of the way and come over to the reuse building and even go through the bypass lane. But as you continue on, there's multiple lanes to get into the tipping floor. The other thing that is a big difference, once you get inside the building, is that today, all the stalls are at a 90-degree angle, which takes a little bit more time to maneuver in and out of. And so if you notice on this site plan, the stalls are angled, which will make it easier for people to back in and out of, to drop off their trash. And then there's also more stalls than there are at the existing facility. So it'll, the turnaround time will be quicker with all these new elements that have been added. And as staff mentioned, this building's fully enclosed. The administration building is connected up on the east side, and then there's additional buildings for maintenance and warm storage on the site. And then this is the landscape plan, and again, you can see this conservation easement over in the northwest corner of the site that will remain undisturbed. There's going to be landscaping mainly focused around the administration building and the main parking area that's open to the public. The entire site will be fenced. And then you see these kind of darker gray shaded areas. Those are areas that will be used to direct the onsite stormwater runoff that's from your paved areas outside the building. Those detention ponds will capture that building for treatment and retention, and then it'll be metered out to the municipal storm drain system. Some of that water will be, once it's treated, will be discharged to the conservation easement, which from the Corps' perspective is a positive thing because it helps recharge the wetlands and keep them, keep them wet. So that's a good thing in their eyes. So that just gives you an idea of what the landscaping's going to look like and how we will treat our stormwater runoff. And then this is, this is the building. So this is, in the front is what is the administration building, and it's glass and faces to the east, so it takes advantage of the mountain views. And then this longer piece here is office space, and then also, they're going to have what they call an engineering on display. So there will be windows that face out to the tipping floor, and it'll be a space where they can have educational activities for schoolchildren or the general public to be educated on recycling and reusing while they watch the traffic come in and out and how the trash moves, whether it's being loaded on the transfer trailers, or commercial trucks are bringing it in, or residential folks are dropping it off. So it's an opportunity to not only educate the community about the importance of the central transfer station, but also the need to recycle and reuse and extend the life of the landfill.
Thank you.
And then this is just another little graphic to kind of further show what happens once you're inside the building. So residential traffic comes in, they back into these stalls, and then exit the building. And then this darker gray area is what we call the tipping floor, where the trash is stored. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for petitioner? I don't, Commissioner Strike?
Yes, thank you, through the chair. This current facility, this facility proposed is approximately, what, four or five times larger than what's currently there? Is that a fair assessment for the commercial garbage collection?
Yeah, that's a fair assessment.
Okay. What about smell? How does smell be taken care of through the design process or through designing this facility? I know there's been some questions issued in the past, and this goes back quite a while, for the current facility, but is there something, anything on the current, how this is doing, moving well, et cetera, that is addressing the smell concern?
Yeah, so I'll start to answer that question, and I'll ask Andrew to step in, because he's really the expert on that. But, you know, right now, the existing facility is really open to the elements, so it's very difficult to control smell. This new facility will be fully enclosed, and it will also have systems in place to help control the odor, and I think Andrew can expand on those.
Yes, and with Sherwood with Tetra Tech, and Solus Devine Consultants, to complement what Laquita is starting to talk about with the enclosure of the building, perhaps, Laquita, can you switch to the floor plan that you had shown?
This one here? Or do you want to?
That's perfect. So if you look at this, the north end of the building is actually towards your upper right-hand end of the page, and the commercial vehicles, number one for what we're dealing with, leaving floor, and the commercial vehicles entry, they're coming in through a door, a ceiling door, they're actually leaving and tipping inside the building, and then you see the exit arrow for the commercial vehicles, they're going out, one of two doors, one of which being the rear wash. In addition, the residential area is going to have an entry door and exit door, they enter the building from the south and move to the roof. So that just demonstrates some of the complete enclosure, which is vastly different than the current facility. Also, the way this is designed, there's prevailing readings depending on season, either from the north or from the south. And the way that this is set up, the commercial doors are essentially outside of the direction of the wind, which is exactly opposite of the current facility, which is essentially open from north to south. So the ability to actually have air exchanges, they're unneeded, basically being moved the material inside the building and out, so not needed, but also winded materials. In addition, with this facility, they have a complete HVAC unit, which will essentially exchange the building air six times, so it's potentially bringing fresh air in and essentially, you know, exchanging the air for that. So the enclosure is really the main advantages. Plus also, there's a significant stream running to have low wind time, the tipped materials, the garbage actually stays on the floor. Methodology is similar to what's used now, but there'll be also the line essentially with the wind sheltered, the windout tunnel, which is actually goes from the, essentially from the west to the east, also to keep the winded materials and air from rushing through that tunnel. So... with the wind sheltering the windout tunnel, which is actually goes from the, essentially from the west to the east, also to keep the wind blowing materials and air from rushing through that tunnel. So dwell tunnel drainage floor is severely reduced, and it's fully enclosed as well as the HVAC system.
So you mentioned that the air handlers would exchange the air six times. I mean, you mentioned that six times per hour, six times per, yeah, six, it's six times. Yep, okay. And so as an enclosed, as an enclosed facility, the smell ideally will be contained to those that then are dropping off and walking into or looking inside the facility. Has this type design, design that you identified here been used by other communities?
Yeah, generally, with the, the design that you have is a state-of-the-art design with respect to how you're handling the vehicles inside the building, minimizing the number of openings, and also, the type of loadout that you're using is highly efficient in removing materials from the floor in a prompt manner.
Well, you mentioned state-of-the-art, though, but has this type design, this type of approach been used by other communities?
Absolutely. There's a number of facilities that we actually toured, including Seattle, and specifically West, they're very, very similar designs that are run in a very efficient manner.
And in two of those facilities, did the topic of the industrial hygiene issues for um... Okay, so there's a contained area of the workers inside, any issues with health and safety concerns for the workers inside, with the, with the wind exposure in the environment of an enclosed facility, or something?
No, and that's where the air, the air changes that we talked about, with the six billion volumes per hour coming through the way. And then essentially, the workers that are inside are also with this setup, they're inside of an enclosed equipment. So there's rail loaders that are on the commercial floor, that have their own climate control, as well as there'll be some excavator-type machines that'll also be helping pack materials into the trailers through the loadout slots, which are directed towards the pointed end of the two orange arrows that you see there. So the work of the, for any duration, or in climate-controlled vehicles, and the ability that we had to expedite not only residential traffic through there, minimize their dwell time, the amount of air breaches we have per hour, and also the efficiency of the commercial haulers, if you should answer that question.
I appreciate that, and totally respect it. If we can keep the air handling room at six times per hour without breaking down and so forth, I, I agree. If we can, we can mitigate and minimize. And it's been said and it's been said, there's been outbursts of air tanks that have had buses that break down in the past and create a heap problem for health and safety for workers inside. So I mean, and you can only have so much backup from a backup, and you can wait for so much, but keep your head in the game. Appreciate it. Thank you. You're welcome.
Commissioner Anderson? Commissioner Anderson, did you have a question?
Yeah, a couple of questions. I guess on the smell, since we were talking about it, maybe explain to me how, if there's six air exchanges per hour, and the air from the inside and the smells from the inside are getting pumped outside, how that mitigates the smell outside? Is there some sort of filtration, or?
For this facility, I believe that the city of design scenario is essentially a dispersion based on the location of the facility. And again, what I spoke to previously is also the minimization of the amount of time that the waste stays on the floor. This facility is very efficient with loadout time, so there's minimal dwell time of the waste that's on the floor. But like I said, as far as the potential for odor, the location of the building within the plotted property, to make sure that we don't have odors at the property line, and essentially with the height of the building and the dispersion for any potential odors to actually be mitigated prior to reaching the property line.
Thanks. The next question is about the recycling. You mentioned enhanced recycling area, and I see a hazardous waste drop area, but I don't see like a, the efficiency or the recycling area that's beefed up to handle. Can you point out where that's at?
Yeah, so the right, okay.
Go ahead, Laquita.
Okay. So right now, they have the reuse and recycling, or recycling drop-off area up at the east side of the site, and then there are plans to look at future recycling and reuse opportunities on the existing campus, once this site is operational.
Got it. And isn't it, when you talk about integrating the woodlot on either the existing site or this site? I do see a lot of people going to the dump just to drop off wood, yard waste.
Um, I know I said, oh, go ahead.
Laquita, you have the other design that actually showed, and we'll just stick on this for a minute. So the household hazardous right now, as you know, is, it consists of an open area lot with two, I think, 1940s-era roll cars, and that being enhanced facility, Laquita, you can point to the household hazardous drop-off facility, too?
No, I don't, I...
Okay. If essentially, yeah, okay. So that's, that's a, that's a complete facility, enclosed facility, that has dried-up drop-offs to complement on household hazardous waste drop-off, that's, I mean, mainly functioned outdoors right now. And then if you go to the other site plan that shows the Advisory CPS property, right there, perfect. So one of the, as we talked about previously, is the space limitations on the existing site. What this facility allows us to do, we're reaching the wood recycling, and also hygienics that we're looking at, are within the Advisory CPS building, for the building on that side, as well as a complete recycling building with that aluminum, green, baked, rec, recator, that you see essentially just near the, of the offices, which is to the left of the page, of the existing moving shop and offices, which are, yeah, that peach colored building, so we might, Laquita, just personally, is there. So really, what happens is, by utilizing this facility, enhancing the household hazardous waste opportunities, greatly increasing the ability to take the volume of residential traffic we have, frees up space at the existing facility, we do additional diversion, you know, for the entire complex.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, hopefully with some thought-out design, I'm making recycling in the woodlot easier, encourage people to divert their waste. Last question, you mentioned that a fence around the whole plan, and I'm not familiar with, off the top of my head, but site requirements or Title 21 requirements regarding site obscuring fencing and the industrial ground, but is there any, maybe for staff, is there any action we should take that would address fencing, or that we need to take?
Through the chair, as far as fencing goes, I kind of brushed on it in my presentation, but I went over it pretty, pretty quick. But the petition site will be surrounded by site obscuring fencing to screen set operations around the entirety of the parcel, I believe, or at least around where there's going to actually be operations. I don't know if there's any need to address that further, seeing as how they have demonstrated compliance within the provided site plan.
And I will just add, there is a code requirement in Title 21 specific to fencing for transfer facilities.
Great, thanks. That's all my questions.
And would Mr. Spafford?
I do need to sign off here now, so have a good night.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Mr. Spafford, would you like to comment about odor?
Yeah, this is Mark Spafford, S.P.A.F.F.O.R.D., and I'm the current general manager for the department. And in my four years, this is just to address odor, in my four years there, I think I have received one complaint from odors emanating from the existing site, and in chatting with my man, my former engineering manager, you know, I think he had received two in his 15 years of service with the department. And so I'm not saying that it doesn't smell there at times, however, I think that, you know, the number of public complaints that we receive are very minimal, considering the amount of trash that goes through the existing station and its current configuration with open doors and, you know, everything being able to locked out, no control on odors whatsoever versus where we're going. But again, not saying that there's no odors ever, but the number of complaints that we've had from the public have been, you know, extremely limited.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Quinn?
Well, yeah, I know the previous, or the existing facility had some issues with the floor being susceptible to, you know, groundwater being contaminated by the way it's brought to the site. What kind of design of the actual facility, I know the groundwater was discussed there, but as far as the internal design to the building itself to prevent that from being an issue, you know, in 30, 40 years?
Chris or Andrew, do you want to address that?
Yeah, Laquita, could you bring up the same floor plan that you had previously?
Yes.
So the other one, one of the things that we're looking at is the type of concrete that we're using to make, not only a crack resistant, but wear resistant impermeable surface for the entire floor, within the area where you see garbage, as well as where the commercial hauls will go. That floor essentially will be pitched to an internal leachate collection system, which will ultimately drain into the loadout tunnel, which also has its own integrated leachate collection system, which will then be pretreated, pretreated to municipal standards, and then ultimately to the sanitary sewer for treatment. So with respect to, you have an enclosed facility with a roof, you have an impermeable concrete floor, and you have a stacked floor sloped to go into a leachate collection system, where the liquid would essentially be taken off-site and treated at the, at the treatment facility.
Great, thank you very much.
Mr. Spafford, would you like to add about the groundwater?
Yeah, this is, again, Mark Spafford, general manager of the department. We're not, I haven't been made of, aware of any kind of groundwater issues from my engineering staff or any staff there, you know, over the duration of, you know, the last four years that I've been the department head. And so I'm not saying that, you know, that's not something that we're not considering, I'm just not aware of any, you know, existing groundwater issues at our existing site, or, you know, that we should be expecting at the, at the new property as well.
Okay, and just to clarify, I wasn't saying that the existing facility has any groundwater issues, I was just mostly commenting on general news articles about the need for replacement that I may have read, or something like that, so not coming from any specific thing that I'm aware of.
Oh, oh, yeah, no problem. I just wanted to make that clear, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the commission? All right, are there any public testimony on this matter?
Hello, Bob, this is the Planning and Zoning Commission. Are you still interested in commenting on the solid waste services of central transfer facility conditional use?
Yeah, I am, but I can't see it, and I'm at only job duty here, trying to get something popped up here, what is it, my time?
It is your turn. Are you commenting as an individual or a group?
What?
Are you, are you commenting as an individual, representing yourself, or are you representing a larger group?
Well, I'm an individual, and I have a joint in property, I don't know, did you see my notes that I sent in?
One second, so if you wouldn't mind stating your name for the record, after you state your name for the record, you have three minutes to present your testimony.
This, this is not an acceptable way you do this, you know that.
Would you like to state your name for the record, please?
My name is Albert H. Good.
Okay, and would you mind spelling that as well? I'm sorry.
They say C.O.O.D. You should have all the documentation from the end already.
Thank you. And so you have three minutes to give your testimony. Thank you.
Right, right now?
Yes, right now.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, this is Albert H. Good, and I'm commenting in a noisy situation here, trying to get some noise out. I would like to know how you get past the wetlands that you would let Walmart build on that property. They, they blocked them out and sold it, after they took, I've heard different stories, but mostly 11 to 14 million in the excavation and fill. And that would have been a drain. They would have stayed on the tax roads, and they now spun off the tax road, and they're trying to build something right across the street from where you have. Why would you want to do that? Why wouldn't you build it in a different area of town? So you cut down on traffic and all the other stuff. And you spent several million dollars on fixing the land last year. So I'm kind of out of breath getting away from things here. What is, what is the alternative? You took property that, that had been really good next to a Walmart supercenter, and now the bottoms fell out of everything, and the price is going to be down on, on the property that we have there. So you're hurting us severely, and please don't misunderstand that I don't like the process, I don't like the way this is going, there should have been hearings before we could have got up and talked to people about it. And it's not right for the city to be able to do something we wouldn't let industry do. So how do we stop it? We put it back in the taxpayer's pay? We're gonna have half the town that's on, on the cusp of, yesterday, we got tax bills today, we're coming in there, and say, "Look at them, it's gonna be over 50 grand." And I don't know what we're gonna do, because we don't have it to pay this year. And nobody's got any help with small business markets that we're in. We got a bomb breaking free, and damage coming at us from every angle. So let's figure out something else and have some hearings where we can participate in what's going on with what they're doing. I don't know how, how long three minutes lasts, but if you got any questions?
You just called it, sir, the buzzer just went off on this end, and I would like to thank you for testifying. And just, I would like to clarify one item, which I believe you talked about, the, kind of the process not being followed. I'm not sure if that was in regards to this being a telephonic proceeding, and us operating remotely because of the COVID pandemic, or if it was in regard to the process that was followed in this case. Looking through my packet of materials, it does appear that the process was followed here as far as us responding to the COVID pandemic. I do understand that it is not ideal from any of us, I don't think anyone here in this room and any of those participating remotely like how this is happening, but it's better than projects not happening and not going through at all, and so it's the best we can do to address it.
Yeah, we're trying to somebody that, that my, my, and they said I've had it too. I've had the COVID.
Excuse me, sir, sir, I have to remind you that your time is up, and so I want to thank you for testifying today, and I believe that our staff is gonna turn off the speaker, because I don't believe we have any questions. we have any questions. However, I did want to summarize a couple of the comments up to make sure that everyone was able to hear. I believe the gentleman was speaking about what was going to happen with the wetlands on the property, and also he was speaking more specifically objection to the property and the expense and why other properties were not looked at. So if the petitioner would like to, oh, do we have any other members of the public wishing to testify? All right, we do not have any other members of the public wishing to testify, so it goes back to our petitioner. And I believe they have five minutes and 13 seconds remaining for rebuttal, so if you want to respond to anything that the public has raised or any items that the Commission has raised.
Sure. So I just want to reiterate, you know, this project is really needed to replace an aging facility that has some inherent deficiencies. I think we can all agree this would be a great improvement from what we have today. As far as the process, this was part of a master plan study that was approved by Planning and Zoning, as well as the Assembly, that was the first step before we even got to this point where we could look at designing a facility on this particular site. This site was previously owned by Walmart, and there was a project started and wetlands permitting started as part of that process. But that was all completed when Walmart owned it and immediately bought the property. And we have been going through the process with the Corps to get the appropriate wetlands permits for the disturbance associated with this project and mitigation that goes along with that. So I don't have any further comments or anything else to add.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the Commissioner for the petitioner, from the Commissioners to the petitioner? All right. Seeing as how the public has testified and the petitioner has concluded their rebuttal, what is the will of the body? Commissioners are looking towards guidance for the proposed amendment. You could look to page 10 of your staff packet. Commissioner O'Quinn?
I just dropped my packet. So I would move to approve the conditional use permit subject to the conditions found in the staff packet, page 10 and 11. And just like to integrate all the comments and findings that were here tonight, specifically the design of the building.
Commissioner O'Quinn? I'm going to cut you off real quick.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So we have a motion for the approval of a conditional use permit subject to the conditions on pages 10 and 11 of the report. I believe that is seconded by Commissioner Strike. Commissioner Strike, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, and moving back to you, Commissioner O'Quinn, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yep, sorry about that. So I'd just like to say that the petitioner has demonstrated mitigation of many of the adverse impacts that are often associated with these types of facilities, including stormwater runoff, odors. They've designed the site plan to minimize traffic impacts and have come to this body on a previous item for replodding in such a way that fits with the industrial character of the neighborhood. And yeah, about it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this motion? Commissioner Strike?
Yes, thank you, and to the Chair as well. A couple of comments and findings. We had one individual testify for public testimony. And in light of the concerns about the process, I do commend the staff and the petitioner, they didn't go out to just a single community council, they went out to a wide breadth of the community councils throughout the city to seek their input and so forth. And I think the predominance of the comments that came out from those community council meetings actually staged around the recycling aspect of the facility. So I think I do find it's very positive for the continuation and expansion of this particular facility. Further finding is that the concern regarding the wetlands and that it should be noted the conservation easements that was identified for the property is continued to be in tears and allow the prior tenant may have exercised and facilitated against wetland issues. I believe it was an economical reason that they pulled out from the particular site. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Strike. Seeing no one else in the queue just yet, I'll add that it meets the approval criteria of AMC 21-03080D. It is consistent with the current comprehensive plan, consistent with the classification. It may bring additional employment act, additional employment opportunities to the area. I find that it's very compatible with the existing land use, especially considering it's located due south of the existing facility, which again makes it consistent with the purpose and intent of the zoning district. Also, I think it's very appropriate that we're hearing this at this time, considering the fact that the transfer station currently does not have capacity or the capabilities to efficiently process all the variety of materials that are currently present within the waste stream today. Oh, and I see that Commissioner Gardner is also in the queue. Commissioner Gardner?
Oh, yes, thanks. I think you captured some of the findings that I was going to include. And I guess I'll just note that with respect to compatible land uses, most of the surrounding areas are zoned I-1, the one exception. There is, I guess technically maybe an adjacent property, properties to the east that are zoned R-3, but those are on the other side of the highway, which will, I expect dramatically reduce any impact associated from the adjacent nature of those properties. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner. That also reminded me of one other item I wanted to address, is that this will not be located within 500 feet of any academic school, hospital, or residential zoning district. Seeing no other members of the Commission in the queue, call for vote.
Mr. Spinelli?
Yes.
Chair Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Strike?
Yes.
Mr. Looney? Mr. Looney?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews, he has gotten, excuse me. Mr. O'Quinn?
Yes.
And Mr. Winchester?
Yes.
Thank you.
And that motion passes. Moving on to case 2020-0043, Commissioner Looney, I believe you are recused from this matter, so feel free to sign off for the rest of the evening. And then Commissioner Krishna, are you back online?
Yes, I am.
All right, thank you. Staff, can we report on the matter of case 2020-0043?
Is this Steve Tobler senior planning chairman?
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the line with me is Joni Wilm, Project Manager from the AMAT section. To go through with you, you're being asked to approve the January 2020 public hearing draft of the Spinnard corridor plan as an element of the comprehensive plan. Your packet items include a staff memo with department recommendations on pages 56, copy of the plan itself, a summary of the public comments, initial response table of those comments, and finally a map of attachments for illustrating one of the department recommendations. Public process has been outlined in the plan in my staff memo, but I wanted to highlight a couple of items for your information. Public process, public involvement process lasted approximately two years, started with stakeholder agency and public interviews and outreach, included a public workshop and an open house in the district, dedicated website, very productive advisory group, and then numerous check-ins with Spinnard Community Council and Spinnard Chamber of Commerce. Two different drafts went before the AMAT Technical Advisory Committee in the process. And finally, the end of the public process was finished up with agency collaboration resolving outstanding issues benefited the final document. We consulted with ADOT, the Alaska Railroad Municipal Traffic and Transit Department to resolve those outstanding issues. This public hearing draft went out for an approximately six weeks public review comment period. So what is the Spinnard corridor plan? It was directed by a key implementation item in the West Anchorage District Plan. It covers the Spinnard Road corridor from International Hillcrest Drive, and is a map on page three of the document illustrating the study area. Our consulting team broke the district into three subareas. The North District, which is called the Commercial District, the Central District, which is the Services and Shopping Area, and the South District, which is Hotel and Residential District. This is Anchorage's first transit-oriented development plan. It highlights the 30-year horizon for planning for the area. It doubles as the Spinnard District Plan. It claims, Spinnard Community Council claims that as their district plan now. This plan was drafted by a national expert team who introduced these national transit-oriented development trends. They finesse these into the plan, which is a total integration of an equal treatment of land use, all modes of transportation and design, and focuses on pedestrian and transit issues specifically. Case 26 shows a map of many of these comments and illustrates much of the transit-oriented development process. It introduces place-making components, street edge character, and numerous economic and market development strategies to make this process work in the next 30 years. I'd like to ask Joni to talk a little bit about some of the mandates from the Federal Highway Administration on this plan.
Thanks, Steve. Can everyone hear me okay? I'm talking into my phone here.
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Yep, so as Steve mentioned previously, this is Anchorage's first plan that incorporates transportation planning and land use planning in our transit-oriented development plan. This is a trend that is happening around the country as folks are realizing that it's really essential to coordinate those two efforts together if you want to make some real progress. And we, AMAT, and with AMAT Transportation Planning, and we are directed by Federal Highways Administration, where we get our money from, to really focus on doing some of these new things like transit-oriented development planning. And so we're getting those directives from them. We're trying to follow through and implement here in Anchorage. And so this Spinnard corridor plan is our first attempt to do that here in the city. We're pretty excited about the plan. We've gotten a lot of good response from folks, as well as conducted a very thorough review, which I don't think we're expecting to be as thorough, but went through extensive review, and that's one of the reasons, one of the main reasons why the planning process has taken four-plus years. To coordinate with the Municipal Traffic Department, the Department of Transportation and Public Facilities, we've coordinated with our project management and engineering department and the railroad in developing this plan to make sure that we are bringing forward a tool that is going to be usable and implementable. And then we've also coordinated extensively with the current planning department to make sure that we have policies in place that our planners, when they're trying to enforce or when they're trying to encourage developers to develop in a certain way that will support this plan, that we give them the tools that they can do that. So I'll hand it back over to Steve, but that basically sums up our coordination with AMAT and Walmart's plans.
So the heart of this plan and the sections we wish the Commission to focus on include chapters four, five, and seven. Chapter four is the land use chapter, which follows the West Anchorage District Plan and the 2040 Land Use Plan, with a few changes and upgrades in that section for designation. It includes place-making and street edge character merged directly with the land use element, and that's illustrated well on the map on page 58 of chapter four. Chapter five is the circulation and transportation chapter. It includes roads, trails, typologies, and main recommendations for future growth and design features. A good, a couple of good illustrations of the transportation chapter include the circulation map on page 103 and the typologies on page 105, including future options for central sections of Spinnard Road. The implementation chapter is very comprehensive, probably our most to date for a land use plan like this. Every policy that's listed in the plan, previous chapters, is assigned implementation action starting on page 154 of chapter seven. Implementation chapter also includes a nine-step implementation strategy, which is a roadmap for future development and redevelopment. The Department recommends the approval of the January 2020 public hearing draft Spinnard corridor plan with the Department of Recommendations listed on page five and six of the staff memo as a comprehensive plan element of Title 21.01. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission? Commissioner Krishna?
Yeah, this is really one of the comments, and a very minor one at that, but I just wanted to bring to your attention that there's some discrepancies between map, the figures 3.6 and 4.1. In both of those, the festival streets are not the same as in the other maps. In figure 3.6, it's missing one of the festival streets. And then in figure 4.1, the festival street definition appears to be in a, maybe means something totally different. It seems to be around the arena. So I'm sure that's a quick fix. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. Thanks, Radhika. We will take a look at that and fix that definition. The one reason why there may be a festival street out of place is that we did have the addition in our reviews with, the Department of Transportation had requested adding an additional festival street. We only had one in there originally, so that may be that what you're seeing there is discrepancy. But we'll take a look at that. Thank you.
Any other questions from the Commission? And I don't believe we have any public comments. There are no members from the public wishing to testify on this matter. So it would go back to the staff here. Would you like to add anything further? I believe you have a minute and 23 seconds remaining.
Was there a question to see staff want to add anything further?
It does not.
Lori? Do you want staff to continue making comment on the plan?
Yeah, you are more than welcome to continue addressing any matters in the pan.
Okay, well, I'll just say a few things since we have some more time. I know it's a very large document and it's very comprehensive, but if you have time, we are, you know, we are looking towards the Assembly, hopefully, and the, also the AMAT Policy Committee. But I encourage folks to look at some sections of the plan that I think are really helpful, like Steve mentioned, the framework concept map on page 26. The transportation network of primary and secondary transportation networks on page 31. of primary and secondary transportation networks on page 31. There's a really helpful map on page 103 that shows how we are attempting to minimize curb cuts along Spinnard Road that I think is super helpful. We also have potential network expansions on page 108 and 109. The future bicycle network is on page 120. That we are coordinating with our non-motorized plan effort that's happening right now as well. This will be the more dialed-in version, but we are coordinating with our overarching non-motorized plan that is happening right now. And I think that's all I had. Just wanted to mention again that this plan is really helpful for AMAS's transportation planners because we can really see where we need to invest our dollars in future projects. And if we can have already had the chance to coordinate with traffic and DOT and PMNE and the railroad, that makes our job a lot easier. And also to have the support of the community, and the community is very supportive of this plan. So those are the things I have. Steve, do you have anything else to add?
Yes, thank you. I was just going to add that once this is adopted, we hope it to become a template for future corridor plans around the bowl especially. For instance, Fireweed Lane or Old Stewart Highway might become a future template for this plan, type of plan.
All right, thank you. Since you did address it in one of your recent comments, I have a question about, you mentioned trying to eliminate the use of curb cutouts. Could you speak more to that and why that is a policy that you're trying to pursue?
Yeah, absolutely. So on page 103 of your document, we have a map of, it should still be on 103, I think I have the most current draft here, but.
Yeah.
Okay, one of the essential things in trying to create some network safety, especially for pedestrians and cyclists, is if you can look and see where you can combine driveways or entrances to businesses. So along the road, you can see where all of the curb cuts are happening right now. And so it just gives you an idea of how we could potentially combine those at some point to minimize those ins and outs along the road. So to give pedestrians and cyclists, I guess, less opportunity to have a conflict with the vehicle. And that's a tool that's used in a lot of different places. But basically, our consultant, Alsa Planning and Design, did some analysis of the road and identified those for us. So it just makes it easier for us and more transportation planning if we're going to look at that section and want to minimize those areas. It makes it easier for us to do that. Does that explain that?
Yes, it does. Also, still don't see anyone else in the queue, so I, one comment I wanted to make is that I really appreciated this comprehensive plan for the Spinnard corridor plan. I would just like to note how comprehensive it was. I really enjoyed the amount of back and forth between the members of the public and staff in completing this. One of the best examples of the kind of back and forth follow-up that I saw was incorporating Minnesota into one of the transit routes that it wasn't quite identified the first time around. I thought that was very important since it is part of the Spinnard corridor, and it should be seen comprehensively altogether, not as a separate through network. Seeing no other questions from staff, I believe we'll move, what is the will of the Would any members of the commission like to make a motion? Commissioner Gardner?
Yes, thanks. I just had a comment I wanted to make that I don't, I don't think it belongs as a finding for the plan itself, but the attachment three that was included with the packet where there's kind of the table with the identifying issues that have been flagged and then clarifications or comments from the staff, that's not a new type of thing. We've seen that before, but I just, I know for myself, I really appreciate having that type of summary available, so I don't have to kind of flip back and forth and try and track everything. And I just wanted to note that, that I appreciate. That I found it really useful here.
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner. Moving forward, would anyone like to make a motion at this time? Commissioner Krishna?
Sure. In the matter of case 2020-0043 of the Spinnard corridor plan, I would like to move to approve with the addition of the recommendations by the planning department on pages five and six.
Moved by Commissioner Krishna, seconded by Commissioner Strike. Commissioner Krishna, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I agree with the comments made so far. I think that the public process was very robust. I, you know, clearly the planning staff took time over a number of years to resolve and work with the public and stakeholders on various aspects of the plan. And I think that we saw that public comments were very strongly in favor of this by both managers and the Spinnard Community Council, so, yep.
Seeing no one else in the queue, I would just like to add that I appreciated the fact that this plan did a very good job of balancing the preservation of the integrity of the current residential neighborhoods while also encouraging the development of commercial corridors and balancing all of that with a very comprehensive look at both the traffic from a vehicular stance and a pedestrian-oriented stance. It does appear to have great support from the public and the community council. I appreciated all of the issue response that went back and the time that went to suss out some of the more complicated issues. And I will be voting in favor of approval. Commissioner Strike?
Yes, yes, thank you to the Chair. I'd like to also comment that this is a well-provided and well-overdue plan that's been presented here now to us. And I think it creates a model by which we can take some of the best practices and adopt it as the staff have initiated it to other areas of the city, whether in whole or in parts. So for that, it's appreciated and the work that they put into it and bringing this into a culmination is much appreciated. Thank you.
Commissioner Gardner?
Yes, thank you. I guess I'd just like to echo some of the comments with regard to the robust nature of the public process and note that we didn't have anyone testify publicly today, and I think for a project of this nature, that probably is largely because of the fact that the community has been so involved throughout the process, that they didn't feel a need to come additionally today. I'll also note that we did receive some written comments from the Spinnard Community Council. I think most of those were considered and accepted by the staff that have made their way into the amendments that are included with, as part of this motion. I think maybe the only two that were not were the references to future interchange improvements and the possibility of the one-way couplet with 36th Avenue that the council doesn't support. But both of those are, although they're identified in the plan, I don't think the plan suggests or has kind of a perspective on those and that there will be a future public process when it comes time to determining which, if either of those will be implemented.
Thank you, Commissioner Gardner. Seeing no one else in the queue, call for a vote.
Mr. Spinelli?
Yes.
Chair Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Strike?
Yes.
Mr. Looney? Mr. Looney, oh, he left early, excuse me. Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. O'Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Krishna?
Yes.
Mr. Winchester?
Yes.
And Mr. Looney was recused from this. Thank you.
And that motion passes. I would just like to thank the members of the long-range planning. I know that these tasks are not easy, they're very time-consuming, and they take a lot of work and a lot of community outreach that happens outside of normal business hours. And I think there is overall comments that this was very well executed. So thank you.
Thank you.
I believe, oh, we have a motion already from Commissioner Strike to adjourn. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Winchester. Seeing none and opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.